Good evening and welcome to the St. Peter School Board, a regular board meeting this Monday evening of July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We call this meeting to order. At our first hour of business here, we will pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Next up, we'll consider the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Vice Chair, I am more of the adoption of the agenda as presented.
I will second that.
Do we have any discussion? My only concern is that we have set, this is number one for our first action items, the acceptance of gifts and donations. And I believe that we don't have anything to address today.
I was wondering why it was on the agenda because they said we don't have any and I'm like, well, it's just good to know that we don't.
So we can just leave it at that or we can strike it from the agenda, whatever is most comfortable.
When we established that as a standing agenda item, we didn't say what we should do if we didn't have anything to report. So we opted to leave it on the agenda and just report that we had no items to report.
Okay, fair enough. We can leave it at that. Any other discussion?
Mr. Graff, could you come up and help us celebrate our graduates that are on the consent agenda, please?
Yeah, so I would like to read the names of three graduates into the record. These three students have met all requirements of St. Peter Public Schools. Those students are Nathaniel Noreen, Abdul Kadir Adan, and Mercedes Anchondo.
Very good. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Awesome.
Thank you.
And with that, I will call a vote to approve the agenda.
So is this approving now just the agenda?
Correct.
Okay. All right, and we had a motion in a second?
Yep, so I'll call for a vote to my left. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Okay.
Now we're sent out.
That we are on consent.
Yes.
I was just confused, everybody.
It's July.
Now, if we have any requests to speak on the agenda, please approach us and we happen to see you here. And I don't believe we have any requests tonight. Thank you. All right, the consent agenda we have in front of us. So we're seeking an approval of our consent agenda tonight.
I was excited to see those names on there, those diplomas for those kids that earn those requirements. It's always nice to see them come through while after the typical times. I didn't know if we wanted to talk more about like the the lease months. I mean, I mean, you see they've gone up, but like what the process is and how that's determined. Wanted to pull that off or it's just been talked about at the business committee and then we just put it in there with these consented items or a consent agenda because like I talked today. If there was anything to add, like I mean, they went up. That's good. That's great. Do we do that every year? How are those rates determined?
Typically, there is a yearly increase to that lease amount, recognizing that the expense of operating the building and the staff to care for the building has an increase. And so we try to cover that expense each year. And so this year, they were increased four percent in recognition of those additional expenses.
I appreciate the business office being on top of that to get those extra earnings in, so. I also saw the resignation of Mary Powers and I feel like she's been at the district for a long time, but hadn't she already resigned? Okay.
She did. She had come back on a temporary basis to fill in when we had a nurse opening that we couldn't fill. And so she came back.
Okay.
I think she's been back a number of times.
Yeah. Well, she only, Mary, you only get a special shout out one time.
So, did I read that right? Were there four?
There were four individuals sharing the position. So they all came in on different days and times. And that position is being replaced. And I'm not sure if that one's in here or not. Jody Fishnick?
Nope.
Not yet. So that one will be coming.
Really? So we had four people in the house.
That's nurses for you.
They were not there at the same time.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll second that.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Any discussion? Further discussion?
Mr. Vice Chair, just a quick question of Mr. Gossip, with the significant number of hirings, many of those are replacements, of course. Has it been difficult to source talent? Are people available for those positions or is it a bit of a challenge?
You know, some of the positions that are more specific have been challenging. You know, there's elementary teachers, there's more elementary teachers. But specific areas like art, where those individuals are a little harder to find. Sometimes we end up going for a tier-two license, which is the case with one of, at least one of the hires that we're doing this year. So that person has a master's degree in the content area, but not a teaching license. And so they can apply for a tier-two teaching license and fill that spot.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, that will call a vote. All those in favor of approving consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Consent agenda is approved. Other thing, excuse me, short, kind of a thinner agenda today. We don't have a student spotlight because we are in the summer months. We're looking forward to meeting our new student spotlights here in the fall. Let's get the buildings cleaned up here first. Little work to do. All right, that takes us into our action items. As we discussed previously, we don't have any gifts, donations, or grants to accept tonight. Right on to number two, which is considering a resolution to approve a ten-year LTFM revenue plan for fiscal year twenty-six.
So in front of you, you should have three documents. I'm really only going to cover two of the three. And the third one is more informational for you. So the first of the three is a spreadsheet that MDE puts out. It's a ten-year plan, the revenue portion, the shorter of the two. So we get three hundred eighty dollars per pupil for LTFM revenue. And in the past, it's been split aid and levy equalized, and it's always been in Fund One. Now that we passed the LTFM bond, you'll notice that in, starting in FY twenty-six, the aid portion of that goes to Fund Seven to offset the debt. So up above the blue, sort of bluish teal lines, those are our bond payments for the IAQ and the deferred maintenance. The two green lines are the LTFM revenue that we'll have. So the top one is going to be our Fund Seven revenue to offset those debt payments. And the bottom line is the revenue that we're going to get for Fund One for projects. So this is the revenue spreadsheet that we have to send to MDE. It then flows through to the second spreadsheet that MDE has us compile. So this is something that every district does. It's the expenses broken down by category and then spread out over the ten years. So you'll see that top section, probably a dozen lines or so, are the expenditures that Seth and Mark worked together to put our plan together. The green lines are the IAQ and the deferred maintenance expenses. So you'll see those up above and then down below in Fund Six. So that's just what the green lines signify are those expenses tied directly to the projects. One thing that we did want to draw your attention to is the maroon lines, sort of off to the right-hand side. So one thing that Seth really wanted to talk about is roofing projects. So we have quite a number of our roofs that, or segments of our roofs that have to be replaced in the next ten years. And currently, right now, you have to use your three hundred eighty dollars to cover those expenses, or three hundred eighty dollars per pupil. And something that we're really pushing at the capital is to either A, receive more than the three hundred eighty dollars per pupil because the dollar amount hasn't changed in a number of years, and/or B, you would receive additional dollars or the above and the beyond, similar to like our IAQ project. And roofs would fall under that as well. So it's something that they're really trying to push at the capital. We're hoping that before we get to having to replace some of those larger roofs, that that is put into place. But if it's not, we might have some issues on our hands. So that's, we wanted this, we talked at length with MDE about it to get their feedback on submitting this because if we submit it as planned, if we don't get additional dollars, if they don't make changes to the current funding formula, we would have quite a negative fund balance in our LTFM fund. And so this is something that we really want to push because we do have roofs that will need to be replaced.
Yep. So in the history of the roofs, they've never done them all at once. They've always done them in sections. Every year, one or two section comes up. And that's just the way it's been set up. And you can see, and starting back in two thousand and thirty, is we're going to start seeing some of them sections come around again. To the best of my knowledge, the history that I have, the roofs have been pushed back for quite a few years already. And it's getting to the point where in the near future, we're going to have to address. There isn't going to be any way around that. And that's why you're looking at, you know, large sums in the LTFM, it's in there. I had a, when did we have our meeting? Wednesday? Something like that. After we had our meeting, I was on the phone with one of our state representatives and Sam Walseth about this problem. So the last two years, I've had the opportunity about four times to testify in front of the state senate on how things need to change. That three hundred and eighty dollars per pupil has been that way over a decade, almost two. When they first came out with the debt equalization, that was the fund that they had. It has not changed since then. You have inflation, enrolling, declining enrollment, and just stuff. When COVID hit, for an example, all the materials jumped a minimum of thirty percent that was never accounted for. So we pushed that two years ago and that one didn't go, didn't pass. Last year, we went in front of, like, take your roofs, the projects, roofs, parking lot, sidewalks. All of that comes out of your LTFM and they are very high, very high-dollar things. So what we tried doing is pushing through, why don't you take those out of LTFM? Open them up for levying and that will definitely decrease the amount of LTFM, the money that's needed in there. That one failed by one vote. So after this meeting we had, we're starting again. This year, we're pushing both. We're going full steam on this because something's got to change. We are not the only school that has, in the next ten years, we're going to have a huge deficit in LTFM. There's many, many schools that that's happening to right now. They're already in critical shape. I feel fortunate we're not there yet, but it is a statewide thing. It's not here. It's just something that we have to work, work to get changed. So we're looking at that and these numbers are real. And that's the sad part, that this is reality, what's going to happen in the next ten years.
I will share too that both with the business committee and with MDE, we talked about the possibility of pushing some of those projects back to keep our fund balance more positive. But A, that is not realistic, at least for what we're anticipating for expenses. And B, submitting something like this, because it's a public document, it helps our legislators see the predicament that we would be in if they don't pass some of this funding. So they actually pushed for us to submit it as we have it. But of course, it would be a decision that you have to make if you would want to approve it as it is.
So I have a question. First off, thank you, because every time I hear this, like, it starts to make more sense and I appreciate that. But theoretically speaking, let's say it just doesn't change. Can we do that? Can you go negative one million in your LTFM?
They will allow, your LTFM can be negative, yes. Her exact words are that they don't like to approve plans that have chronic deficits.
That seems kind of chronic.
Yeah.
We had been negative. There was a roof done twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen?
Yeah.
Maybe around that area. And it did go negative. Since then, we've been trying to pay that up. And so that's how we got where we are now. And then the cycle would kind of repeat itself when those roofs came to again.
I suppose, because it would probably go like this, like we'd go way down and then eventually it would kind of maybe inch up maybe closer to zero again and then it would. Okay. But we really can do that. Okay.
So what are we looking at for like, I don't know, any nuanced trade-offs? If we approve it, consider this. Or if you're not going to approve it, consider this.
Well, you know, if you don't approve it, then we have to go back and have to look at what can we push back? What can we take out? What can we move back to get it outside that ten-year frame? That's not always a good idea because if you take it out, what happens if it, in two years, you have an issue, but it's out of your, pushed out? How do you get the money or how do you sell that saying, well, you pushed it back? Why do you need it now? That's one of the issues that some of the schools are going through. There are seven schools in Minnesota right now that cannot get insurance because they couldn't afford their LTFM, kept pushing their roofs back, kept pushing them back. They're in such disrepair that they cannot get insurance on those buildings. Without insurance on the buildings, they cannot open those buildings. So it's a real dilemma that they're facing. And the way things are going with financing for schools right now, that might be in your future, which I'm hoping not.
Sounds to me like this is a real good opportunity for legislative advocacy. We've got five years to fix this.
Yes, ma'am.
We're not the only ones and the number of schools that would be in this situation should be listened to, so.
Yep.
It's not next year.
That's why we started that conversation already.
And if it helps them to see it as it is?
Yes.
I'm good with that.
Yep. That was a recommendation from Sarah, from Sam and from Bianca.
Is next year the budget year for that?
It is.
Yeah. So I'm of the opinion that we approve it as presented. If we do that and we don't get any correction from the legislature, you have to approve this plan the next year, which gives you an opportunity to push things back if you need to. But I've happened to be in Seth's office looking at bills. Well, he's on the phone sometimes. And they're working very hard to try and correct the situation. And he is working well with roofing consultants also. So they're doing a lot of studies. So if they feel that they have to be done in that timeframe, I think they'll have to be done in that timeframe.
And it does, I mean, if we have a budget cycle next year at the legislature and then two years from that, we have opportunities to really push this so that it doesn't become our deficit.
Yep.
That's what we have to do, get our community behind us.
Could also give MSBA the support that they need to get it on their agenda.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Sure.
The business committee went over this in really a veramont of depth. The, if you just look through the categories, there isn't luxury items there. There are things that are essential that need to be done and completed, much like your own house. And roofs are expensive and nobody has a house with quite as many square feet of roof as a school district. But anyway, it's something that we need to deal with and approve annually and recognizing there are concerns down the road. But at this point, I would encourage approval of it that may need to be addressed in the future. But at this point, that's the best information we have.
Do you have any more? Or can I make more?
Well, just as a side note, because then the last attachment is what they use to budget for their projects. So I won't go over that in depth, but it's just for your information. It's the different categories and then broken down by building for the projects that they'll do, plan to do in each building over the next ten years. So if that's, if you ever wanted to know where some of these numbers came from, it's from that larger packet.
Super excited to see tuck pointing happening at all the schools. Love tuck pointing.
We just had it done itself.
And it wasn't cheap.
It's always cheaper than we pictured it. It's always tuck pointing.
Yes.
Always, always, always.
Well, Seth, thanks for, and Megan, thanks for being on top of it. But for being on top of the legislative part of it too, that you take the time to figure that out because that is very important for us.
So then
We'll consider a motion.
I would move the resolution to approve a ten-year long-term, long-term facilities maintenance revenue plan.
Okay.
Twenty-six.
Do we have a second?
Spectrum.
Very good. Any discussion or further discussion?
Just again, thanks, Megan and Seth. Getting this to us so nice and early.
It's not really, it has to be approved this morning.
Do we have a motion on the floor? All those in favor, please say aye.
Oh, it is a resolution. Now we're back. Thank you.
All right. Resolution will be going around the table. Thank you for helping me catch that. We'll start on my left, Mr. Russell.
Aye.
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 unanimous, the resolution passes. Thank you.
Megan gets to stand.
We are now considering another resolution approving the sale of the district's general obligation warrants.
This Michael Hoheizel has joined us from Jared.
Yes, thank you.
You might remember Matt Rantipo was here last time.
Must have scared him off. He's not coming back.
Yeah, Matt, no. Well, he's got a young family and we gave him the night off. But I'm not in, I'm not in North Dakota. I'm not in the hospital. I'm down here, so that's a good thing. First one was a little bit of emergency surgery. After my son graduated from high school
Nice.
in Stillwater, I looked like this at graduation ceremony. And then my kids told me, Dad, you're looking yellow. Maybe you should think about going in.
Oh, no.
Nine o'clock at night. And I said, I'll be fine. And five-thirty in the morning, I woke up and said, I'm going in. And three o'clock, I was all better. So it was a good, it was good to get my gallbladder out, so. In, congratulations on passing the LTFM. I'd love to hear perspectives because behind the scenes, I worked on the legislation that was talked about in order to take a few more buckets and say, hey, if you're going to keep us at three hundred eighty bucks per pupil, let's keep that to carpeting, walls, whatever. We talked about, we talked about building envelope with MDE staff pushing. And we talked specifically roofs, paving, sidewalks, and we had tuck pointing in originally. And that one got thrown out right away when the legislature was being written for it.
Really?
That one was tossed immediately. And so that was sad that if we can keep the elements out of your building, that three hundred eighty bucks is going to go a lot longer. And the impetus for that was that what is the right number for schools? Well, it's so hard per pupil to find out because as we're declining in pupils, those dollars per pupil are, you're getting less each year. And you, even though people are patting themselves on the back, that they're giving you more funding. And it's not happening because you have less students generating those funds. So just keep up the good fight and I know MSBA is in your backyard and keep pushing. So this is your third LTFM plan that's been approved while I've been on watch in the last year because you had to do an intermediate one and that intermediate one is on the single piece of paper that we shared with, that should be on the side of your packet. So to begin, anytime we bring, anytime we bring you into the market, there's a number of things to bring you into the national market. One of those things was trying to coordinate a rating call with Standard and Poor's. And between administrator's schedules and getting information, we chose that, we chose to do what Bill was on, out of the office. So he had to pre-write his answers and he did an outstanding job. And Megan was the other person, along with a couple of my coworkers, Matt being one of them, in the rating call. And she, I just want to say she did, both of them did an outstanding job in their roles. There were two questions we couldn't answer, a few questions we couldn't answer during that phone call. Bill got right back to the rating agency and we thought we were going to postpone the sale. And we were able to keep it, they actually got us the rating two days before we thought we were going to get it. So thank you, Bill, for responding over the weekend and getting information. So you have a triple-A credit enhanced with an A-plus underlying. Keep in mind that they threatened on the phone call, they thought that you were ripe for a downgrade. That downgrade was based on where your budget deficit has been. And what Megan did was turn the tide on that and say, yes, but here's how we see this budget folding out over the next couple of years. Here's where we think the kid count is going to be. And by moving this and this and this, making budget adjustments, like you all know you have done, they like to see that you're zero-based budgeting. And that held the rating and that held a lot of people in. With the A-plus underlying, we still had a couple of the big insurance companies pass on our national desk. So that makes a difference if we were to get one more jump on number of people that were interested in your paper. But we had, I believe at one point in time, we were four-point-six times oversubscribed on, I think there were seven or eight maturities, if I remember correctly, that we wrote. So we took bids on the whole thirty-four, or we took an hour and a half pricing on the whole thirty-four million, two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-dollar package. Remember, that's made up three components down the bottom left-hand side. It's got the voter-approved amount, the indoor air quality amount, and the regular deferred maintenance, all wrapped into that thirty-four million, two-ninety. Draw your attention to the interest rate in the middle, that TIC, that's true interest cost. That's your mortgage rate, as we've talked about. The referendum piece of this, we went out with a five percent. Four-point-nine-eight was what we projected to Department of Education. And I think it seems light years ago since we did that. I think it was December when we put that document in front of you all. And the market held and we were able to get a four-point-one-four percent. That's a difference of two million, four-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars less in interest than we projected, paying on this thirty-four million, two-ninety. So congratulations. In turn, we not only look at trying to come in better on investments, but we, you don't get to do this all the time. You don't get to go to market. So if you draw your attention to the lower right-hand corner, in those three buckets of money, we also raised an additional one million, nine-hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars. Now, if you think of the roof discussion you just had and the regular deferred maintenance items, that'll give you right now, depending on how you, buckets of money, Pat Overman and his crew at ICS are going to come back to you. Depending on how they can maneuver those buckets of money and then invoice them, we think that's going to give you at least a hundred ninety-three thousand dollars to the deferred maintenance bucket, which could be an additional roof patch or a part of a roof patch or what have you. Whatever you decide to do with those dollars. The other thing is, in these numbers, and I'll have to grab Megan after this agenda item when she's done with her grouping, you're going to turn around and get these funds in the middle of August. And I even have the date that you're going to get that, Megan. Do you know that off the top of your head? August thirteenth. August thirteenth, you're going to get the full, all these funds. And then Megan and district will turn around and invest those proceeds. None of those investments are accounted for here. Okay, so if you open up the walls and something gets, you have a change order, investment earnings or this dollar amount or a project differentiation that, hey, we think this should be done instead of this, you have the opportunity to make you have the opportunity to make those changes at that time. So with that, I'll entertain any other questions to, otherwise, what you're looking at is basically what I call a ratifying resolution, awarding, basically awarding the bonds to be lent and further debt service levies to be put on your taxpayers until they expire. I think another question I, that, that came from a board member was, all bonds callable after two thousand thirty-one? And with that, that would leave us, that makes eligible twenty-eight million, nine hundred thirty thousand of this thirty-four, two ninety, eligible for refinancing. So even though we thought we were at five, we're at four, if we get rates in those threes or twos, this will be a, you, you will be able to refinance it and further save taxpayers down the road.
Now, any questions?
Okay, right there at the end, you said something about we're not going out and buying the bonds right away, so if we open up the walls and see something else, can you just repeat that whole statement?
So, so let's say you, it's the old high school, cause it's a middle school project. So one of the projects you were doing off the top of my head was redoing the labs up at, up at the top third floor.
Okay.
So you open up that wall, whatever you were going to do it, all of a sudden something sticks out and says, oh-oh, we gotta regroup and redraw, or we need to do something else to repair this or make this the flexible earning spot that we thought we would. Let's say that costs an extra a hundred or two hundred grand. If investment earnings could cover that, so don't be, don't be alarmed, we have room to make, to fund surprises, so to speak.
Okay. Okay. I thought you were talking about the timing of the investments versus the opening of the walls and I'm like, we're not opening any walls before August thirteenth.
No.
That's where I was, I, I was just not understanding that part, but, okay, now I'm with you. Okay.
This sounds like you really are golden right now. This looks good.
I am, with, with the high interest rates,
Yeah.
you know, we did a lot of analysis for two months on whether or not we should only sell a portion of these bonds. What, we were looking at drawdown schedules with IRS, regs, what have you. A lot of discussions with Pat, calling him in a truck going across central United States. And he said, well, I still think we can, you know, we, they gave us a drawdown schedule for three years. I believe ICS's intent is still to try to get it as close to two years as possible to, for the construction, if they can fit it in. And so those have different connotations about how much money you can keep of your investment earnings. And so they can kinda, in working, in working through it, we said, no, let's lock it in. We think interest rates are gonna come down a little bit, but what we're seeing right now is a flattening of the yield curve where we've got like five point three percent treasuries up front in the first six months to a year and we're looking at four point, I think it was four point four when I left the office day on the thirty-year treasury. So our yield curve's kinda going like this. I anticipate that we're gonna see a balancing point. I don't know where this is gonna go. I don't think anybody knows what the interest rates are. I think they're gonna cut interest rates before the election at least once or around the election. How that fits into the balancing of this, so that was the impetus to say, hey, if we can be in a lower supply time right now, let's get, let's get thirty-four million to the market and let's, let's see what we can get. And I think Matt showed you four fifteen, four sixteen when he was, when he was down and, and one point eight million versus one million, nine forty-one. So we thought, we thought that was the right balancing act for the taxpayers and the district.
Well, we're doing, we're doing what we're, we can with the taxpayer dollars and that's what we wanna do.
Yeah, I, I, I am tickled pink. I could bring this to other, other boards or turn around tomorrow and do it again with you, I would be tickled pink.
We can say thank you to the taxpayers who supported the referendum, for certain, yeah.
May I ask one quick question relative to the arbitrage rebate? As you indicated, the proceeds would be available as of August thirteenth. Obviously, it'll be interest that accrues on that or income and the, that's on, I guess it's on page fourteen of your packet, section seven point zero three. Is that paid back to the state? What kind of timeline is that?
You have, you have three, so it's, it's not a state regulation, it's a federal regulation. And we put in the document that you're looking at that we assume the district will, will be able to make a construction drawdown schedule if they get near the two years. If you can't, you're eligible to earn at least three point six eight percent on your money. So what would happen is if we earned three point six eight on, uh, thirty-five million, two thirty, oh, that's not gonna work, point zero three six eight, I should've had this one in, figured out, thirty-five million, two thirty-nine, seven ninety-seven, one oh one. That would give you an extra one point two million dollars.
Okay.
Million, two sixty-seven that you could keep. You might earn two million dollars at five percent. You guaranteed to keep the three six eight.
And that's all debatable to the Fed, not the state at all?
Depending on how it works out, yes, you may have to send that to the federal government, that extra one point two million difference, whatever. The difference between the two and the one point two in that example.
Sure, okay, thank you.
But we will work with Megan to make sure that she's got a handle on that and depending on who you do your investments with, they will track that on your behalf and I will shadow it.
Thank you.
I'll move approval of the resolution and.
Would you like me to read it?
Yeah, please, yeah, if you've got like.
Resolution of the School Board of Independent School District, five oh eight St. Peter Public Schools, Minnesota, approving the sale of the district's general obligation bonds to the purchaser thereof, determining the form and details of such bonds, authorizing the execution, delivery and registration of such bonds, providing for the payment of and the security for such bonds and authorizing and ratifying certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
Very good.
I move the resolution as read.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Second, very good. Do we have any discussion?
Just to reiterate, it was, appears to be a very good job of taking it out to market, thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much.
All right, we will do, we'll call votes, I'll start from my left here, Mr. Russell.
Aye.
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 All right, ayes have it. All those in favor, say aye, all those opposed, yes, we did that, sorry. I'm, I'm already two steps ahead of myself. Yeah, we're good.
We have to do one.
Resolution is approved. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
All right, next on agenda, the Consider of Resolution of Approving the Sale of the District's, don't we just do that? Consider as a resolution authorizing the superintendent to be our IOWA for St. Peter Public Schools.
I feel like we just did this, but was that having Kimberly be the assistant aisle?
Right, if that was, yep, exactly, she was the Iowa proxy. And so, once, once a year, we are required to identify the identified official with authority. This is attached to really all of the data banks for the state and who has authority to enter that information or to be an administer, administrator of that data for the district. And so that is myself with Kimberly as a proxy. Each year, we go in, we looked at all of the people who have the authority to enter data into the systems and we make sure that the correct people have been identified. And when someone moves on, we take them off, put the new person in. So that's what that's all about.
This is a resolution?
This is a resolution.
Do we have that?
Uh, I think you can just read the recommendation.
The resolution is, the recommendation, recommendation is that the school board pass a resolution authorizing Superintendent Bill Graff set to act as the identified official with authority for the St. Peter Public Schools.
I still move.
I'll second.
Okay, very good, this is a resolution.
Quick question if I may?
Yes, please.
Can we officially approve Kimberly last time as the alternate or should she be part of this as well?
No, she is identified as the proxy.
So on what's included here, though, there's only a spot for you. On page, well, it says a ninety-two on the bottom of my page.
Right. So you identify me as Iowa and then I identify Kimberly as a proxy?
Oh, it's just not on here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Further discussions? Very good. Call from my left.
Aye.
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 Very good, resolution passes, thank you.
Little bit more on that, so each year, I have to approve everyone, but I can't approve myself. So that's why the school board approves mine.
Ah, that makes sense, no.
Next up, we consider approval of tenure action of probationary teachers.
And I do wanna point out that Mr. Kaut, Director Kaut, pointed out that this is technically as of July first because that's the date at which people would need to be, non-renewed, if they were going to be. It says August nineteenth because that's the first date they are on contract for this year. But technically, there's this period between July one and the first day of the contract that we technically couldn't non-renew them, but they're not fully tenured yet either. But anyway, um.
So what is the right date, July first or August nineteenth?
Technically, it's August nineteenth, the first day of their fourth contract. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven teachers who are earning their tenure status this year. That means that they have successfully completed either three years with us, if they have not been tenured in another district, or one year with us if they have previously been tenured in another district. And I'm not sure which is which on this list.
So that doesn't change anything with like their contract or anything like that, like their contract still starts July first?
It, receiving tenure gives them more rights to their position through contract language in the first three years, which are, or one year if they're, if they've been tenured in another district. They can be non-renewed without giving a reason. If they are tenured, you, they can't be non-renewed without reason. They are still subject to contract language if we were laying off people. So they would, instead of being non-renewed, they would be on an unrequested leave of absence and have rights to a job if it opened again. So that's the turning point of tenure.
Basically, probationary teachers are non-renewed and if you have a disciplinary issue with a tenured person, you don't non-renew them, you're terminated. And there are rights that go through as far as hearings and so forth.
Tenured teachers enter onto the seniority list.
Yep.
Of all the benefits to that.
I was just trying to figure out the time between July first and August nineteenth, like.
It's normal.
Yeah. Well, congratulations to these seven individuals, that's, they've had a couple of years where I'm sure they were all holding their breath and so, congratulations, you guys made it, really, honestly, I mean, that's awesome.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I move to accept the list as presented for tenure action.
I'll second. I'll second.
Maybe he's first.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? My left or right? Okay, very good, I'll, that, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed, same sign? Very good, resolution pass, sorry, the.
Better gold, no.
Yeah, yeah, right, we're done with resolutions. Um, next up, thank you, the Consider Approval of the Social Studies Curriculum Purchase. Thank you, Dr. Graff.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Graff. Yeah, so I'll speak to this while Lynette is, I'm sure, enjoying her time overseas. But the high school will be engaging in a new concurrent offering through a partnership with MSU Mankato. It's a social studies course and to run that course, there's a required text. That required text is called Give Me Liberty and there's a cost to that text of three thousand ninety dollars. So we're recommending that the board approves that purchase.
So is this kinda like a college within schools course?
Yes. Yes.
So who's teaching?
I do not know that answer.
I thought I knew the answer, but I'm not sure, so I'm not going to say wrong.
Is this replacing AP American History then?
I don't know that answer definitively either.
From what I saw of the curriculum, it is an AP-like or it's an AP credit.
I believe it's a second.
Right, yeah.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, sir.
To formally get this on the floor, I will move that we approve the social studies curriculum purchase.
Very good, we've got a motion to approve, do we have a second?
I second.
May I do have a question, by me?
Yes, please.
Uh, Dr. Graff, just curious, you had the request from the middle school and Mrs. Dingoldinger did from the high school. Will the course be offered both middle and high school?
This is. This course? Yes. Just a high school level course? Oh, okay. Yep, yep, I'm just here representing Lynette.
Okay, yeah, they're in the, in the packet, there was a document that indicated it was a presentation and I guess that's what you're doing, okay, thank you.
Fill in.
There you go. I was, be impressed, the fifth graders could take a college in class.
They're pretty advanced, but I don't know if we're there yet. Give us a couple of years.
I know you have them on the fast track.
That's right.
Um, just out of curiosity, so we don't normally approve like every textbook we order, do we?
Mm-hmm.
We do.
Yep.
Okay, I just don't ever remember approving a textbook.
So it, it typically comes through,
Okay.
it typically comes through during the curriculum review process. But because this is off of that cycle,
Right.
that's why it's coming to you now.
Okay.
Last year, we purchased Yale materials, but it had come as part of the recommendations. We were all in the media center and we had all the teachers presenting
Okay.
what their recommendations were.
Well, who's the publisher of this then? I guess maybe I should. Do we know? I mean, I know that's probably a silly question, I probably should've asked it sooner, but I'm just curious. This is an MSU course or a college in school, right?
I, yes, it is and I would need to.
I looked it up online and it's, it's like a four and a half, five star. I looked at the review of it online as well and it's an AP level course.
I know, I'm just worried that I'm approving some textbook that I'm gonna regret approving, but I'm gonna just, give me liberty and give me peace on this.
Generally, with these partnership courses, it isn't our staff who are selecting the books, it's the college.
So I can, it's really just a formality really is what we're doing here tonight.
We just have to purchase them.
It's just a formality.
I mean.
You don't really have, it's just a formality.
You know, I mean, theoretically, it could be an MSU professor who wrote them.
Yeah, sure.
And, you know, it'd be a ethics thing or something, so, I mean, Tracy, that's, I think, that we'd concern about.
Yes, that.
Well, I know, I just.
And you can always abstain if you are uncomfortable.
Well, I, I feel like I should have probably done more due diligence on it than I did. So I guess I feel like in that sense that I didn't do my part in thinking it through more, so.
Um, I just revisited it, it's, uh, by Eric Foner, who I don't believe is an MSU professor, so. And it, it is reviewed and so on, um, on various book purchasing sites.
I'm just probably gonna abstain only because I didn't review it, uh, um, look at it and I promise I'll be better for the next meeting if we're doing things like that. And I apologize for not, and I really honestly have no excuse.
No, that's fair.
So, I'm sorry. Sorry, Mr. Graff.
Any further discussion?
In essence, if that's the course, textbook that's required, if we're gonna offer the course, we have no option.
It's just a formality, yep.
We don't have the liberty to.
You don't.
Go ahead.
I'm not gonna abstain, I'm voting because abstaining is abstaining and I'm not going to abstain, I'm gonna vote.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, any further discussion? Anything else? All right, with that, we'll call a vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Very good. We have a passed action item. Thank you, Mr. Graff, that's our Dr. Graff, I am so sorry, we'll get that. I know, I know. Um, one last action item that's. Oh, information, sorry, I was like, we made a mistake. So informational items today, we're talking about the changes to the twenty-four, twenty-five school day start and end times of high school and middle school.
Yes, uh, the education committee was also presented with this information. There's no change to our preschool K ready, south or north schedules. Those are the same as they were, but I wanted to include them in this report just so people would see that there was no change there. Uh, with the middle and high school, we are making some changes to the school day. It's really, was motivated by the middle school schedule. The middle school had the longest school day of all of the schools and it was really based on our transportation model. And, um, because we use the middle school as a hub, they were the, uh, really the first dropped off or the, the last to be picked up um, after they gone to the, all the other schools. The effect was, um, Dr. Graff really had no time left to bring teams together, to have staff meetings together for those IEP meetings that are trying to be scheduled because we would run out of contract day because of where the school day was falling within those hours. So we got together with Saint's Bus and the other principals really tried to work on how we could make some adjustments to allow for their teams to have some time during the contract day for those important meetings. And, uh, working with Chris Leclerc on, um, how many minutes of instruction are in each day. Uh, we were able to identify five minutes during the middle school lunchtime that could be really counted as part of the instructional day. So although the time shift is twenty minutes for the middle school, the actual realized difference is fifteen minutes. Um, given a start time of eight twenty-five and an end time of three ten PM at the middle school and then at the high school, eight fifteen to three oh five, uh, how, it still keeps all of our schools within the required, um, time requirements. Um, with enough left over for that traditional snow day and even a, a couple of emergency days if needed. So we still have cushion within that, that timeframe. So we're looking forward to these teams having a little more time to, to come together and, and do some work.
What is the teacher contract time?
Our teachers report at seven forty-five and our dismissed at three forty-five.
Okay.
And with the buses, um, leaving around three thirty-five, there just wasn't a lot of time to get together for our collaboration.
So I actually thought it was seven thirty to three thirty, so I was wondering how you were having school at three thirty-five. But obviously that was why, cause it was seven forty-five to three forty-five, so.
Are we still in a situation where the buses stage through Lincoln Drive?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And that's just a must because of it being the only space that we.
It's, it's probably the safest spot.
Yeah.
It's a clean line of sight.
Yep.
Super smooth.
Yep.
Kids come out, kids can transfer, uh, and we have about six staff members out there supervising on any given, uh, afternoon. And it's, it's smooth, um, so as much of a, a, as it gets tight with the middle school scheduled, um, it's, it's the best spot.
Okay.
I do want to commend the middle school staff for doing that, cause I haven't been out there. Because they aren't just supervising the middle schools. I mean, cause there's kindergartners getting out there and first graders and second graders and I see like middle school teachers like taking kindergarten hands and so, thank your staff for doing that. Because, you know, this, I'm not blaming the south teachers, but they're not hopping on the bus to take either kids. So it's all really falling on the middle school staff, so, I don't know, I guess we've never given them a shout out and it seems like now would be the perfect time to do that, so, cause that is a, a big undertaking. Cause it is organized chaos.
Only for the first few days, like day three, they're getting pretty smooth.
I mean, there's a random shoe laying out there sometimes and it's like, hello, who gets this shoe?
Any further questions, comments? Before we move on? Okay, uh, or building principal?
Just the one.
Jassy.
Love to see you up here again.
He's the only one working this summer.
Getting my steps in.
There we go.
All right, so, uh, summer months, uh, they're kind of bittersweet for a principal. Uh, bitter in the fact that like a guy like me can't sit still and I need people in my life and there's not really anybody at school, uh, and I have to sit in my office. So that's the bitter part, but the sweet part is there's a lot of downtime. And downtime, that big list of to-dos that you can't do during the, during the school year gets done. Uh, so some of the things that I'm working on right now, just kind of to give you guys an idea of what we all do in the summers, uh, a lot of scheduling, uh, working on emergency action plans this week, student handbooks, curriculum work, uh, and hiring. So those are the big things on the list right now. Um, also going on right now, which makes me not so lonely during the, the morning part of the day, is we do have K through eight targeted services and extended school year going on. Um, that started on August, I'm sorry, July eighth and will go all the way through August first, Monday through Thursday, about eight to noon, uh, for our schools. K through four is at North, five through eight is at the middle school. Uh, in those numbers, we have fifty-one students that we're serving at the middle school and a hundred and fifty-five students that they're serving at North Elementary. Um, with those start and end times, I just want to speak a little bit more to that. Uh, it's gonna be, I think, a game changer for the middle school. Um, our entire philosophy is built on collaboration with our house, uh, model. And we just didn't really have time to get together to have the conversations that we need to about curriculum or about student needs. Uh, so this will really help with that. Uh, preliminarily, we plan on having a weekly staff meeting, uh, every Wednesday to just make sure that we're on top of our game. Uh, next, uh, the men in the middle oversight committee has met now for the second time. This is new for me, uh, it's very interesting to hear engineers and designers talk. Um, last meeting, we talked about the design for the science room, the STEM lab, the art room, um, kind of what the general classroom might look like, we even got into some color schemes. Just a little, uh, preview, not enough St. Peter blue for me.
Oh, no.
So, working through that. Uh, but it's a really cool project, uh, process and really excited to be a part of it and, and really excited for what's coming, coming down the road for us. Um, in terms of hiring, just an update for, for me at the middle school, uh, we're still searching for an art teacher. We've had some interviews and trying to narrow down candidates, looking for a long-term English language learner sub uh, to fill in for Helena as she, uh, goes on her maternity leave. And of course, uh, we'll start interviewing paraprofessionals here in the next week or two. And then lastly, uh, we will be welcoming our fifth graders on August first and second in our jumpstart program. And then we're also hosting two new two district orientations on August fourteenth and fifteenth. So we'll blink and the school year will be here.
For sure.
Any questions?
How's your, um, maintenance in the building, you know, summer?
Like how's it progressing?
Yeah, I mean, it's a little more difficult, I would think, with all the kids that are.
Yeah, so they, they plan it out really well. So we know ahead of time which rooms we're using for summer school and they make sure to get those taken care of first. Uh, a little bit of an overlap with the media center. This year, we do have some summer school kids in there, cause it's a, a good space. Kind of push them to the side to do the carpet, move them to the other side, do the other side of the carpet. But it's progressing really, really well. Um, it's amazing to have Seth around, Seth is, is very well planned and it, it's looking very, very nice. I just told him earlier, I've never seen the floor on third floor look so shiny. Uh, you walk in and it's like, wow, it looks good, so, very excited.
Very cool. Thank you, oh, yes.
One quick question, has there been a real pleasant surprise and influx of a lot of new students?
Um, we haven't seen that yet. End of, end of the school year, we did, we got a, a good influx of students. Uh, that typically comes in August. I think families are starting to make decisions about next year, right around August and, and we start to see those enrollments come in.
Sure, okay, good.
But we haven't seen that lately, right?
Not as of recent, no, we have not.
You don't usually hear about those.
Yeah.
So happens to happen.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
My turn.
Graff, your turn.
Yes, I had it on my list to speak to the, the, kudos to the maintenance crews as well. I too have been all around the, the middle school and I did note that the third floor, I thought it was wet. It was not, it was just that clean. So I see that those crews are hard at work every day, uh, all around the school and I appreciate all that they're doing as we start to get ready for the fall. Something about that, you know, that right before school starts and everything is shining and all the classrooms are clean, it's just, uh, great to come back to, so glad to see that is going. And I also want to remind folks that reading is the number one way to avoid a summer learning slip. So I encourage families to read every single day, get to that library, it's a great place to find reading materials and for activities and some contests that I have going on. Um, so, read, read, read.
Very good, thank you. And, uh, we'll do what's around the table here with the board members, to my left, Mr. Russell.
Uh, just to reiterate with Mr. Graff, as just said, I, I'm very involved with the friends of the library here in, in St. Peter. Tremendous resources available at the library and we encourage people, just as you indicated, take advantage of not only the, the books, the periodicals, but the programming that's available. It is really outstanding and please utilize it to, uh, to benefit everybody.
Well, I was also gonna talk about the floors of the middle school because my husband. My husband is a teacher and he commented about the floors being waxed, so I was gonna give a shout out to them, so. Um, and also, I mean, nothing like just getting floors waxed and having us all get really excited, but, you know. Woo, yes!
They look good.
Um, Fourth of July fireworks out of Community Spirit Park, feedback on how that went for us here at the school? Was there any sort of like, were the parking lots all pretty clean, how did our citizens do, how did they leave us?
I, I think for the most part, uh, it, it went well. I do know that Ed Lee was up on the school grounds, like as the sun was coming up to make sure there wasn't anything left. Um, that was one of the concerns that we had shared, that there might be mess or damage. And so he was, um, making sure that it looked all good.
I think it was a good opportunity for us to be able to, you know, do that. I'm glad the fireworks should be able to stay in town and it really didn't, as long as our facilities weren't damaged, which I don't know how driving cars in our parking lot would do that, so, I was glad that, that could happen, so. I don't have anything else. But good job on the floor, Seth. Go do some more.
Uh, Mr. Caut.
Um, one thing that's not on the upcoming meetings is our mediation session Friday, right? So just hopefully say a little prayer for us that we can get our last agreement taken care of during the mediation session. That would be nice to get everything wrapped up. Cause it's not public meetings.
Correct.
Yes, so does that have to be posted if it's not public?
Probably wouldn't hurt to post it, just. Kimberly says it's there. Really, it's the bureau's meeting, so I don't know if they're in charge of posting it or not.
Very good, thank you. Case.
I just feel like we had a good meeting, I feel like we got some good news out of this in some direction for our next tenure plan. I think this is good, thank you.
Yeah, very good, very good. Anything else to share? All right, thank you, uh, we've got some upcoming meeting, meetings to, uh, to your attention. July nineteenth, this Friday, we've got a negotiations, uh, meeting with one of our office board.
Uh, one of the groups?
Yeah, one of our groups. Um, we have an education committee meeting coming up August eighth in the district office at one PM. And Wednesday, August fourteenth, business committee meets at ten AM in the district office. We don't have our next regular board member, or board.
There's, there's another sheet of paper.
Very good. Policy committee meeting coming up August fourteenth at four PM in the district office. And our next regular board meeting is Monday, August nineteenth, uh, six thirty, right here in the governor's room at the community center.
Do we have a study board session scheduled?
We sh- we should have one in August.
Cause, so the, I think the study session last year was to go over the rev- your review. That's what it was listed on the minutes for that meeting, was your review and then there was, um, talk about the embed lease. So when we had talked about it, do we have goals to go over?
We, we will later in August, maybe we, I mean, we could.
Hold it until August.
Before the August meeting, I think is what Charlie said in the note that he sent us, so, yeah.
The conversation was had that things were maybe a little bit behind last year. That's why the special, or the special board meeting or study session happened a little bit later. So this year, maybe we're ahead, that's why we're able to do it in July.
We'll work with Charlie to find a date for that study session, but there will be a study session coming up.
Yes?
Yeah, I forgot convention, I won't be able to attend the next one.
I thought you were gonna say the study session in July, I'm like, it's not even scheduled yet, but it's the one in August, so.
I likely will be in the same boat, we'll see, we'll get to that. Anything else to share?
Why are there Nats in here?
I don't.
There are, there are Nats everywhere, so city needs to.
All right, I will.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Very good, we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
There was a Nat, I got it.
Thank you, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion passes, meeting is adjourned.